I think we have a few things to go over together and I'm really looking forward to the Q&amp;A, which is usually the highlight of these discussions. So let me begin by welcoming you and pointing out that since we last met, a lot of things have been going on because of the members of our community. For example, the admission cycle has made a milestone, a new high watermark for the number of applicants to Olin College, which is really terrific. A couple of years ago, in 2009, we weren't so sure that this would happen soon. We couldn't be more delighted. Olin's -- interested in Olin has never been higher among high school kids around the country and now around the world. So you can see, we even have a lot of candidates from abroad. There are 183 that have been invited. What's unique this year is 27 gap-year students. Since our class size is 84, that means we have 57 spots to fill with a record applicant pool. Promises to be really interesting spring here at Olin. But usually what happens, as you know, is that we bring these amazing people here, meet them, spend a weekend with them, and then at the end of the day, somebody has to make a decision who's coming and who's not. And there's a sort of a grieving period after the invitation letters go out for the ones that we wanted but didn't have space for. And I suspect that'll happen again this year. Okay. Another thing that's happening that I think you all know about is that we are in a search process for a successor to Charlie Nolan. So this is Charlie's last time around the track here in running Candidates Weekends and getting things up. And the process is really in full swing right now. We expect that we'll have a candidate, a finalist, in attendance at each of the three Candidates Weekends, at least as many as three of them. And there are people on campus in the next week or two. So stay tuned. Really important decision for us, as you know. In addition to that, we have a commencement speaker this year, which I think many members of our community might have an interest in. This is David Kelly. Who's heard of David Kelly? Does anybody? Okay, quite a few people. Fascinating guy. I've spent some time with him. He has a very interesting personal story. He's had health issues. He's got a brother that's also a partner in his business. He's the founder of the D-School at Stanford, the design school, which has been, you know, amazing pioneer in design thinking and sort of created a lot of the discussion about design. And also the founder of IDEO. Now, I was at a conference last year with the CEO of IDEO who explained their process for recruiting new employees. And he mentioned to me that last year they had 14,000 applications for about 50 spots in their company. So I thought Olin was selective. He'll be an interesting speaker, I believe. We had a expo this fall. As you can see, 146 visitors. About half of them were family, I believe. I think personally, that's a great thing, but it would be even greater if we had a little more people who weren't family from corporations who were seeing what we do because that generates opportunities for our students and more interest in scope and so forth. We also had a new feature this year with some schools that came from the neighborhood, from the Boston neighborhood, which is really a great thing because K through 12 has a great interest in what we're doing. And I think this is also an important feature for the future of engineering. Now, we've had some students and alumni in the news recently. All of this has been advertised by Olin, but it's interesting when you put it on the same page. Indico, with $3 million in startup funding, is amazing just from the point of view of the magnitude of interest in what's going on there. I personally get sometimes a little nervous when the size of the funding becomes so large. It can kind of warp the space around it in decisions. It's a good thing. Nevertheless, there might be some danger in that too, so we should think about that. Greg Mara, one of our recent graduates of class of 12, not that long ago, is getting a lot of press. Some of you probably know, there was an article in the New York Times about Google and their news business. He's the guy at Facebook for doing this, deciding what news you see. And for a guy that I think is 26, that's kind of remarkable. In addition to that, now Forbes has named him on the list of 30 under 30 people to watch. So terrific news. And of course, the Olin MIT joint team in ocean robotics won first place internationally in that competition. In fact, I was in a meeting recently with presidents of about 20 other technology schools. And a really well-known school, particularly in aircraft industry, was impressing everyone that their team had gotten something like fourth place in this. And I had to think for a minute about whether to mention this. Nevertheless, we were really proud that our team came in first. We also have another first for Olin College. A graduate of this current class, Jeff Holzgraf. Are you in the audience, Jeff? This is really embarrassing if he is. So he's the first Olin student to be selected for a Marshall Scholarship. Now, if you don't know about this, the Marshall Scholarship is essentially the same kind of process that is used for Rhodes. And the main difference is, the Rhodes Scholarship, you have to go to Oxford. And the Marshall Scholarship, you can choose any school in the UK. And he's going to Cambridge, and he's going to study physics. It's quite interesting, you know, how many of you are majoring in physics at Olin? So Olin doesn't have a physics major. Isn't that interesting? Academic life, there's some other interesting things going on. So this spring, we have some new courses that are being started. And you can see their names there. I won't read them. I'll bet you there aren't too many engineering schools with new course titles like that that are being developed these days. This is a number of one-credit seminars by Olin alumni, so we're getting far enough down in our history that we have alumni coming back and helping us with teaching courses, which is an interesting thing. The new products and markets course. I just had to have this photo on the slide because of the energy that it shows that's going on in this new course. We're really very excited about the spread of entrepreneurial mindset throughout the whole community. A bunch of co-curriculars are -- this is just a sampling of what's going on. 24 of them is a lot. You know, we believe in this learning continuum, so learning doesn't just happen in classrooms and in projects. It also happens out of the classroom in whatever it is that students are interested in pursuing. And also, other members of our community. So building community by sharing interests. A really interesting development this year is rethinking the library. And it's really more than the library. If you had been at this retreat, you would find that the discussion about how to use our library space more efficiently quickly grew into a discussion about culture at Olin, about making things, about the whole vision that education and engineering is not about learning science alone, it's about learning how to make stuff. And you need a place to do that. There are a few power tools for changing culture. One of them is space and how it is allocated. Another one is language, what we say and how we say it. And the third one is values. All of these things came out in this faculty retreat, and you would have been really excited to be there. And many of you were, because you were faculty and staff. We have some reorganization. The Student Affairs and Resources Group, our new name for the support system that we have here for all student needs, is being launched. So you should know that this is the official name for our group. Financial report, which used to be the heart of these town meetings when we first started them, is now only got two slides because we're much more comfortable today about our financial sustainability than we were in the past. One really interesting thing is that not everybody in the media has figured that out. You may remember that last spring, some of our friends at the Boston Globe essentially got it wrong in an article that got a lot of attention, raising questions about our financial sustainability. We complained a lot, but you're in a defensive mode at that point. However, we were surprised in November when another newspaper in the Boston area, the Boston Business Journal, on their own, without telling us, reported that the Globe article was just wrong. And they're very blunt about that in this article, a little bit -- I mean, it's hard to not be happy about that from Olin's point of view, but also a little worried about being the tennis ball in a match between these two newspapers in town that keep bringing this issue up. So we're happy and we're smiling about it, but we haven't been sending this to every friend in the community. However, if you run into a person who has the misperception that Olin is in a financial nosedive, I wouldn't hesitate to point out this article to him. Okay? The fiscal year that we're currently in, we're only halfway through because our fiscal year ends on June 30. Everything that we have seen is -- shows that we're projected to end the year essentially on target in the budget, maybe slightly in the black, which basically means we don't take money out of the savings account to pay a rent for that particular month as we had worried we would do at the beginning. We're currently developing the budget for next fiscal year, and web-based budgeting is on the way. This is a graph which is now iconic at Olin, so if you're new to our community, you'll see this in every one of our town meetings. The blue line is the value of essentially our savings account, our endowment investment. And as you can see, in the early days, this little dot is awfully small, it was growing very rapidly, up to essentially $500 million in 2007. So we were, you know, some members of our community were projecting when it's going to be a billion dollars and everything was going great. And then, you know, this thing happened. Oops. Yeah, this thing happened. And for several months there, we were holding our breath, as was everyone else in higher ed. Things got a bit volatile in the meantime. There's this up and down stuff. The up and down stuff is slowing. It's now steadily rising. And the red line, on the other hand, is what's called the 12-quarter trailing average. So if you take at any point in time, like that red dot right there is the average of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12. So you take those and average them. That number plays a big role, particularly on December 31, in deciding what our budget will be for the next year. So we pay a lot of attention to the red line. And so my instructions to Steve have been really simple. Do what it takes to get the blue line above the red line because that pulls up our bank account. And now, as you can see, we've had several quarters in a row where the blue line is above the red line. And the red line is beginning to move upwards, which is a really good sign. Okay? And we've been doing that while making investments, growing our influence, building the faculty size and all the rest. So it's not that we did it by cutting, we did it with investment management. Okay. By the way, another outcome of the financial crisis was a big glaring red light on the dashboard about development. Okay? Maybe there are other sources of revenue than spending from our savings account. Maybe some other people care about us and can help us build the institution, and development took off in a big way. So as a result of that, we have been growing our development program. And generosity to the school is really remarkable for a community that's this small. So what you see there is the results as of December 31, which is not the end of the year for the college. It's the middle of the year. It's the end of the year for individual taxpayers, but it's not for people who work at the college. So this is like mid-year results. And 1.3 million is what we have in the bank as of December 31 for this fiscal year, which happens to be 64% of the total. Now, that's 50% of the time in the fiscal year and 64% of the goal. And in order to interpret that, you need historical data. And if you go back and look at where we were last year at this time, and if you look at previous years, our conclusion is if you're at least 60% of the goal at mid-year, you have a very good chance of ending the year on target. Okay? So we believe this is on track to meet the goal of 2 million for this particular fiscal year. And the participation rate, which really amounts to the percentage of the members of our community who care enough about the college to make even a $10 gift, is among the highest in the nation. And we expect, based on the data that we have from December 31, that we'll on track to maintain that record. I believe personally that we are the highest in terms of percentage participation in the school, but it's very hard to know because there may be some small colleges that are not included in the statistics in other big reports. 31% increase in the number of gifts to the college this year, which is expanding the size of the pool of people who care about the institution. There's a new trustee challenge that happened last year, which is very exciting. Couple of members of our board have committed half a million dollars over five years, and they're sort of now challenging each other to join in. So there's several members who have joined this, and this is a growing initiative. This sort of thing is the confidence builder that you need to get people who are not members of our board to make a similar kind of commitment. And we're quite optimistic that in the next few years, we can put the philanthropic support for the school on a new level, which is very important. We also tried something new this year with Mary Kay's leadership. We had something called Giving Day, December 2. And that one day brought in 100, more than 100 new gifts and amounted to 7% of the total, which is really quite interesting. So we pay a lot of attention to this because we're trying to get other people to help invest in the school to make the education of our students more affordable and more successful. There's also a new website that demonstrates who's giving at what levels, what difference does giving make, how does this affect the institution, and we're quite proud of it. There's also a new video. There's actually a couple of new videos that have been created, and they'll be launched very soon. This is one that just has some snippets from a number of people in the community who have been participating in this video. And as soon as our Board of Trustees has had a chance to look at it and approve it, there'll be an official launch of this, and Michelle can give you more details. The revolution is on. Leaders are looking to Olin for inspiration, for ideas, for guidance, for support. And since our fall town meeting in September, 60 more different, unique institutions have been through Olin for scheduled visits. So we now have 480, almost 500 universities that have been here in the last five years. There's roughly five years and a couple months. This is just a sampling of some of the new ones. This group, you might not be able to read this. That's the Chief of Naval Operations Strategic Studies Group has been through. There's several military groups are paying attention. USC Viterby School, I'm sure you've heard about that. And this is the Indian National Academy of Engineering. Set a number of presidents of universities around India. Some of the IIT campuses have been here benchmarking what Olin is doing. And this is just a small sample. I mean, there's 60 of them, so there's like a few. Our Collaboratory, which is our lead effort to interact with other universities to help spread the ideas that change is important and change is possible in higher ed. This group has a strong partnership with the University of Texas at El Paso. We've had visitors from El Paso each semester for the last three semesters, and we now have a fourth one. And this is our latest Argosy Fellow, which is the title we give to faculty members who are visiting from our close partners at UT El Paso, Assistant Professor Megan Vaughn. And she'll be teaching UOCD this fall. So I'm not sure if she's in the audience. Yeah, in the back, there she is. So we want to welcome you. One of the new features that the Collaboratory has been developing in the past year is more engagement from students. So this has been, you know, at first, the deans and the presidents of institutions talk to each other. They find budget, they find openings for kinds of collaboration, then faculty get involved. And now we're finding the real power tools are probably the students. Students really are helpful, really effective. And I think these students that spent some time at INSPIR in Sao Paulo, Brazil this year had a very good time, and we certainly got great reports back from Brazil about their engagement. They, you know, they just ask us, when are you going to send us some more? And I think there's some more down there this year, in the spring, and who knows, in years ahead, this may be a continuing stream of interactions. By the way, our friends at INSPIR. INSPIR is a program, a private school. It's actually, it stands for Institute Involving Inspiration and Something Else. This started as a business school about the same time that Olin started 10, 15 years ago. It's one of the first private business schools in Brazil. Most everybody in Brazil goes to the federal universities, which are free. It started out somewhat tentative, and in about a decade, it became ranked number five in Brazil in business. Their leadership became interested in starting a business school, I mean, starting an engineering school adjacent to the business school with a focus on entrepreneurial thinking. We got to know them through some friends at Harvard and -- because Harvard was a mentor for their business program, and so now Olin has become the mentor for their engineering program. Lots of challenges in this, so they've created this new engineering school from scratch. A lot of regulations, a lot of government oversight. There was a great deal of concern about getting permission to break the rules, to do things in a different way like Olin does. We got word just before Christmas that the government had given them permission to recruit students, which is a big deal in Brazil. And they've had their version of Candidates Weekend just the last couple of weeks now. And the reports we've gotten back are just over the top. They're excited, they're thrilled with the kinds of students that have been attracted to this. So there's very much evidence of an Olin influence in the way they're thinking and the sort of start that the institution's gotten. And our students have been a really important part of it. Okay, so this is my last slide. We'll have time here for questions. And I just wanted to tell you a little bit about why Olin does this and what we're up to. If you look at the founding precepts for Olin, this is the purpose that the Olin Foundation invested $500 million to start a new school. They didn't do this because they thought the world just needs another school, okay? Let's go create one. They did it because they thought somebody has to create a template for how to educate engineers in a completely new way, all at once. We don't need a new course in entrepreneurship here, a course in design over there. We don't need a new degree program at University X. We need to start all over. And that's what Olin was created to do for a purpose. And the purpose is to become an important and constant contributor to the advancement of engineering education in America and throughout the world. And we haven't figured out how to do that by staying home and teaching classes all the time. You have to actually be engaged with other people if you're going to make an impact. And that's why the nearly 500 universities in the last five years have been here. That's why a lot of our faculty members spend time in other parts of the world on committees, leading things at a different level. We are now involved in a project called Creating a Network of Networks, whose goal it is to essentially challenge other universities, large universities, to increase the percentage of students who walk across the stage on Commencement Day, who have developed these attitudes, behaviors, and motivations that associated with innovation, in addition to their technical competence. There's a fraction of them at every school today. These are largely students who are self-motivated, who find opportunities to start a club, to start a business, to take a course in the business school, to go over to the art program and learn something about how to create on your own. It's all self-initiative. And usually, it's not recognized on the transcript. It's something that's an extracurricular activity that they did on their own. And what we're trying to do is to challenge our colleagues at other universities to mainstream those ideas into their requirements for a degree. Every student who walks across the stage today in engineering in the US has had calculus, 100%. Not every faculty member in an engineering school is a calculus teacher. Doesn't take a large percentage of them to do that. But what makes that possible is the widespread acknowledgement that calculus is fundamental to what we do. And what we're hoping to do is to persuade colleagues that these innovative ideas, entrepreneurial mindset, creative design are fundamental to being a successful engineer, as fundamental as, for example, calculus. And every graduate who walks across the stage should be exposed to it. It's a pretty steep hill to climb. We don't know whether we'll succeed, but the number of institutions is growing. One of the steps along the way is something called the Grand Challenge Scholars Program, which I think is, Olin has been a leader in since the beginning. And last May, 65 deans of engineering across the US signed a document that went to the White House about pledging a commitment to graduate at least 20 students every year who've completed all five of those. And now this is going international. There's a large group in China that wants to join. There's a group in this Indian group that was here earlier. The Indian National Academies was here specifically in order to understand how to create a Grand Challenge Scholars Program throughout India. So stay tuned. This is a work in progress. Olin is trying to learn how to be much bigger than our footprint in influencing others. And that's what I had to share with you from my point of view. Now I'm interested in hearing what your questions are. Come on, this is Olin. You never get out without questions. Anybody awake? That's the first question. Yes?
That one slide had 480 unique visitors in the past however many years. A few years ago at the town meeting, somebody brought up, what is Olin getting out of these visits? Even at the time, there was a talk of, oh, should we have them make a donation to Olin or something like that? So I'm just wondering, is there an update to that question that was brought up a few years ago? Because obviously, it takes a lot of staff, faculty, and student time to host all of these visitors. So what does Olin get in return?
Yeah, that's a very good point. I guess the first and sort of obvious thing is it's Olin's mission to do that. So whether we feel that this is totally beneficial to Olin alone and only partially beneficial to the other institutions is not that critical to whether we go forward. On the other hand, I can tell you, you can't be a leader in a field like engineering without knowing what's happening at other institutions. Because you often think, well, this is really cool. We invented this idea and it can do all of this stuff, only to find out that places in other schools have been doing it for a long time. So learning about best practice at other institutions is a challenge in every institution. I've been on a number of university campuses where very respected senior faculty members in one department have been there for over 30 years, and they've never even been in the building for the next-door department. So how do you know what they're doing? This program is amazing because it brings to our doorstep, on our campus, leaders of now almost 500 universities, telling us what they're doing and what they hope to change on their own institution. So that's just from a knowledge point of view, what are best practices? I also think there's no better way to learn something than to teach it. And from a faculty development point of view, being involved in helping a colleague learn how to innovate in their own educational program provides the kind of development and experience that improves our own classwork, our own innovation within our own program. And you really should talk to other faculty members here who've been involved in this, like Jessica and Mark and others, if you want to find out from their perspective what they feel that we bring home. Maybe you want to add something to this. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I don't see you waving your arm too high.
So I think Rick captured it well. I'd say there's, you know, these 480 unique institutions and sort of many more people than just 480 because they're often bringing big teams. And they range from folks who come and spend three hours on campus and get a tour and meet with a faculty member and meet with some students and see a few things, to folks who come and spend a day or two and who send faculty back to be engaged in our workshops, who become interested in some of the other ways to partner with us in a more sort of intense way, the way that UTEP and INSPIR have. So, you know, if you were to kind of plot sort of the level of engagement across those 480 institutions, you'd see quite a mix, you know, not as many end up You know, not as many end up in sort of that intense engagement with us. And there's an awful lot in the like, "Hey, we'll come spend half a day at Olin." And that's actually the part that's hard. I mean, that's, you know, there's a call for faculty to be available to meet with these folks for an hour here and there. And I think we're still trying to figure out how to make that work well. But we've done actually a lot. Sharon and Lynn in the collaboratory, the students that are part of that, have actually done quite a lot to sort of streamline a visit to Olin. So they're getting an authentic look at things, they're getting to meet some people that they really care about meeting with. And if they're looking for more, we often have a number of avenues for them to kind of take next steps. Come to one of our workshops or one of our events, consider some of the other ways to partner with Olin, so.
Great. Lynn, do you want to add anything to that?
I couldn't say more than that's good.
Okay. I guess from my point of view, it affects my own behavior and attitudes a lot. At first, you know, there's this, "I'm awfully busy. What do I need to interrupt this because this person from someplace I can't even pronounce is here today? Probably they just do rote learning and classes. I guess I'm doing penance for some previous sins or something, I don't know." And then I realized, actually, there are no uninteresting people in the world. There are only uninterested people. And the more you talk with them and the more you find out who they are and what they stand for, the more you get out of it. So it's been really useful for me. Any other questions? Yes?
So you showed, we had over 1,000 applicants this year, and it's awesome that there is interest. How are we making sure that we're not seeing a self-selection bias with a 5% admit rate with people just saying, "You know what? It's not worth it for me to even bother trying."
Yeah, that's a really good question. That, you know, Candidates Weekend is a really cool thing. I don't think any other school I know of does exactly what we do there. I'm convinced that it has a large impact on developing the culture of who we are. It's certainly based on the thinking that multiple intelligences are what's necessary in order to think about complex problems. And multiple intelligences extend past your test scores, and you have to meet people to find that out. But in the meeting with people, you have to deal with your own attitudes and behaviors, right? It's easier to pick people who are just like us. And so there's always a risk there. But I think the person who probably had more to do with what we do in Candidates Weekend than anyone else in the room is Charlie. So I'd like Charlie to explain how we think about that from an institutional point of view. Alex, ask a question again.
So my immediate question was, if we have something approaching a 5% admit rate this year, how are we making sure that people are still applying, that the applications even coming in the door are diverse, and that we're not having a self-selection bias where people are saying, "I'm clearly not good enough to get into a school with a 5%..."
Right, right. I understand.
And if they're basically, it should be between nine and 10 or something, but still, will it put us in the top?
Easily top 10 or 12 in the country. We work very hard in terms of outreach to prospective students, particularly underserved students or underrepresented students in the field of engineering in terms of our outreach. In fact, students have told us we're almost borderline harassing them to try to get them to be interested. And we have got them to be interested. The problem is that we've also had students who are exceptionally strong also apply, and therefore has raised the standards across the board. And so...
We are, we're at a crossroads now. I actually think we're going to grow something to the order of...
Up to 1,500 applications next three to five years. And so we're really going to be uber-selective. And so it'll be certainly the job of the new dean of admission to focus in on trying to find students who are going to bring the kind of diversity that we think we need. The fact of the matter is, we already have considerable diversity geographically, ethnically, socially, economically, at least from my point of view. And when you add in the Gappys and their year of experience, that's yet another form of diversity. But we never lose sight of that for a moment, and it will certainly be one of the challenges the new dean of admission, financial aid will have as well. Is that all? Thanks.
Other questions?
Yes.
Somebody needs to...
You said a thing, a couple things that I thought were really interesting about how Olin's job is to lead the innovation in engineering education. And so just going along with that question and the fact that we are bringing in a new dean, I'm curious sort of how aware faculty is, because I know that there's a lot of awareness developing on the student spectrum with developing how we decide to do things to really push further and to not make sure that, because we're developing such a huge application pool for the amount that we're allowed to accept people, that we sort of let that allow us to sort of, to slip into selecting people that make our numbers look really good, but aren't actually the kind of people that are going to change the world, which is what our mission is here at Olin.
Yeah, I think that's actually another admission kind of question. How do we select people, bring them here that will help change the world? Is... Well, if you're still talking...
Sorry. Not only that, but like, it's not just admissions. I mean, it's majorly that. But it's also a cultural thing that everybody has to be aware of. And I think that, and I'm not sure how appropriate this is actually to bring up at a town hall meeting, since I haven't been to one before, but just making sure that there's this discussion, like in all aspects of our community here, where people are really cognizant of the fact that we need to be pushing, we need to be making sure that we don't say, "Oh, we've done enough." And making sure that the decisions that we make are not because they're going to benefit us financially, or they're going to benefit us, you know, in sort of the, in our standings and whatnot, but that it's really, it's really, we're making decisions that are for people.
Yeah, there's a lot of questions in there. I'm not sure I heard everything, but one of the concerns that I'm hearing is, how, what kind of a process do we use to make sure that we don't get distracted by things like rankings or quality of numbers or dollars, but we remain true to the mission of trying to be constantly pushing the envelope and changing, possibly not even just with other universities, but within Olin, so that Olin is constantly doing new things? Is that roughly similar? Okay. Well, for one thing, let me just say that Olin does the best that it can to try to make its unique mission known throughout the world, frankly, that Olin is different from other schools because of this purpose of trying to become an important and continuing contributor to the advancement of engineering education everywhere. It's kind of a missionary approach. And so every candidate for a faculty appointment, every candidate for a dean's appointment, every candidate to be a trustee or to be a student here knows that. So there's a bit of self-selection that we count on. So if this is not what rings your bell, then you should really think about it, because there's lots of people applying here. You should only come if this is what you want to do. We also spend a fair amount of time inside. I mean, obviously, I'm not personally involved in the admission of anyone, I'm not on any admission committee. It's our community that is, and there's a substantial amount of student involvement in Candidates Weekend, as well as faculty who are right on the ground, meeting people, expressing opinions that are all included in the admission process. So it's probably the most democratic way of bringing new people in that I've seen in higher ed. And then our faculty, I think, derive almost all of our curricular decisions. But I should ask Charlie and Vin both weigh in on these, this particular type of question.
Very quickly, your question is something that is constant throughout the admission process. We have five teams of faculty and staff that review and continually ask that question about, "Who are the kinds of people that are going to make Olin a better place, that's going to make the world a better place?" Then we get into the admission committee, and that by and large is a theme. And then we get to Candidates Weekend, when students, who among you have sat in on a Candidates Weekend interview process, who are the best fit and who are the people who are going to make the world a better place? It is a constant theme that we think about and talk about and make decisions about. Because by and large, all the metrics, SATs, GPAs, they're all packed together. So they're not a distinguishing factor. It's really the person themselves that makes the difference in who we select.
Vin?
It's a good question. It's something that we think about a lot. I'll take it from a different angle. One thing that may be a little bit subtle about the search for the new dean of admission and financial aid is, in fact, that dean, and this is not a matter of a power change, but that dean's going to report into academic affairs and student life. And it's part of an evolution of a closer, actually more organic coordination between admission, student life, academic affairs, what I hope we start to think of as academic life at Olin. And it's, that is, the types of communication that you're describing is more organic to the process. One of the types of questions that I'm asking the finalists and semifinalists for the dean of admission and financial aid applicants are just what you described, is how do you measure success? If the applicant pool changes in numbers, you have to drill down a couple of layers deeper than that. Is it just 1,500 for 1,500's sake, or is in fact, that defined a different space than existed when you had 1,000? So we don't have, there's not a silver bullet, but I think we're iterating towards a process there.
Yes, another question, right here in front.
You mentioned earlier the importance of teaching and education. And in the past few semesters, I know there's been a bit of an uptick in student involvement in the curriculum. You have the curriculum committee, as well as a number of student-led courses that have started to emerge. And I would wonder, I'm wondering if you could give me your perspective and maybe some other faculty around here about the role of students in developing the Olin curriculum and how they can engage themselves in teaching Olin students.
Well, I'll say a few words, but I think this is really a question for Vin and for Jessica. You would rather go to Jessica. Since Olin's inception, students have been fundamental to everything we do, from what we then called the Olin Partner Year, where frankly, I don't, I'm speaking for myself, but I bet others feel the same way. I learned more from our students and their experiences with trying outrageous things that year that we expected to fail, but didn't, than we ever learned from courses or from textbooks about teaching and what works. And they became partners in the institution, and it's been that way ever since. It's probably been from a individual student seat perception, waxing and waning of the visibility of that. But the culture and the openness and the hunger for bringing students into that, particularly the academic world, has been constant since we started. Jessica, you want to add to this?
Sure. You're right, there's actually a lot more happening, it feels like, in the last couple of years. And I think it's, it's both kind of a reaction from the faculty side, and you know, the first 10 years have passed, and we kind of hit a point where we really tried to re-energize the curriculum innovation efforts, and the students were kind of saying, "Yeah, great, let's, how are we going to do this together?" So there have been, I think it's also the, John Stolk and Jenny Zafger's research group has a lot of students interested in engineering education and research in that space. The Curriculum Co-Curricular has drawn a lot of students. We've had engagements where students have spent time at INSPIR and at UTEP over the last couple of years, directly kind of taking their Olin experience and bringing that to bear, working with other institutions. And I think there's more to come. We're talking about, students in the co-curricular are looking to kind of bring back that partner experience, not in the same way that we did it 10 years ago, 12 years ago, but in similar kinds of ways, that we're designing not for students, but with students. So as our curriculum innovation efforts continue to be energized and be happening more, we have a lot of exciting potential projects coming our way for some summer projects. We're looking at how students want to be involved in those and asking students to actually propose their involvement for the summer and ongoing. So it's, I think it is, I think you've kind of captured it well. It is something that we're doing more of, we're kind of revisiting what that looks like and feels like and how we can make it happen in kind of this newer context 12 years later.
Terrific. Other questions? Yes?
So I was just wondering, I know curriculum's always changing at Olin, and we obviously have really great facilities at Olin, but I think we're starting to notice sometimes as our curriculum's changing, it's not what it was when we first started out, that sometimes the spaces that we have here aren't always matched best to our curriculum. And I know that we're doing really great things in the library, which I'm really excited about, because there's been a lot of student input and a lot of discussion on that. I'm just wondering if that's effort that's going to continue to go forward and looking at other spaces on campus to make sure that those also align with our curriculum.
Yeah. Let me just start this by saying, we from the beginning had a commitment to do things in innovative ways, but there's a startup problem that's true in every new institution, and that is that the buildings have to be built first before you bring the people in, because it takes longer to build the buildings than it does to recruit the people. And so our architects, I think, built a beautiful campus. It's one that gets a lot of comment when people come and visit, but it's not necessarily designed for the curriculum that we developed, because the curriculum wasn't here at the time the campus got built. And so we've been struggling with that ever since. It's also kind of an embarrassing problem to bring up to the Olin Foundation, who spent so much money to get a wonderfully nice campus, to tell them, "Well, thank you very much, but we actually have to change a lot of this stuff now, because it doesn't do what we need to do." And they've been really patient with us and investing along the way. I think this recent faculty retreat that dealt with a very practical problem, what should we do with the library, is probably the beginning point of a long journey about thinking about campus master planning, about the future of the curriculum, about the future of the facilities, maybe future buildings that need to be built, in order to do a much better job of integrating the facility needs with the direction of the curriculum that's going. Maybe Vin or someone would like to talk about the faculty retreat and the beginning process that's been going on in planning for space.
Well, I'm not going to give a summary of the retreat, but I think the Strategic Fabrication Committee is going to have a lot of chances for engagement as far as that's concerned. But I think it's an important project to focus on, because I think it's a unique project in the sense that it probably is the first time in Olin's history where space and its integration with curriculum, not only curriculum now, where it might go, has been part of the conversation. As Rick described, the former experience over the last, over a decade, is backfitting to an existing space as things evolve. Now we can start from where we are and think where we want to go. It's, I appreciate the enthusiasm of saying it's a great project, it's exciting. We still have so much to do in that project that I'm a little hesitant to think about what the next project is, not only because of its scope, but because I think we're going to learn an awful lot from this project. My philosophy is that you really have to dig your teeth in to a project before you see what, you know, what the pros and cons and whether your ideas really play out. So we're going to be very thoughtful about it, we're going to engage the entire community. That was the theme of the retreat, was engaging the entire institution, and now, and the students have been part of it through the committee, but now more so. I think at the moment, we're really going to focus in and see what we can learn from that process. It's going to inform bigger decisions as we think about what other buildings might be or how we might repurpose other spaces that are here. I think we've got a lot to learn in this project.
Sure. Mike's going on the wrong side of the room now.
I just wanted to add to that, that it is, the library project is unique in that way, is that we think we're going to learn a lot, it's going to be a college-wide effort. But I wanted to emphasize that the Strategic Facilities and Fabrication Committee, the Olin Workshop and the Library Co-Curricular, people like Aaron Hoover and the students who worked with last summer, have tried a bunch of smaller experiments around, like the Principles of Engineering Room, for example. Last summer was converted into a very different-looking, very different-feeling kind of space. And we've heard great things from the students and the faculty that used that room, and the ones that were using the room next door that hadn't been sort of changed up. And so I think we're going to continue to do these experiments. And I would say, keep your eyes open for smaller kind of pop-up kind of things that are going to give us more information about some of these larger projects that we want to do. But we want to, you know, I mean, in order to make those kinds of transformational changes, we need to start seeing what things feel like and how we can live in them and learn in them, so.
Good. Another question, two-thirds of the way back.
Should have done that before I got the mic. I was just going to say, you know, I totally am excited to collaborate with the students. So if you guys have ideas of things you want to do in the library, there's nothing I'm more excited to do than collaborate with you guys. So, you know, self-identify, come, you know, and let's experiment. And I think that is definitely the mission of the committee, is definitely what, you know, so the whole school is, you know, in, like, prototyping and iterating on the small scale. So an invitation, less than a question.
Terrific.
Library Director, Jeff, sorry.
Thanks, Jeff. Other questions? Here's mine.
I don't feel like standing up.
Okay.
Back on an admissions note, it seems to be the trend that we keep getting more and more gap year students. And I'm wondering...
More and more what?
Gap year students.
Gap year students.
Committing to just coming the next year. And I'm wondering, because there's, there's an extreme to this, right? On one side, there's zero gap year students who promised to come. I don't know if that has ever been the case. On the other extreme, there are 84 gap year students who pledged to come. I am also not sure how likely that would be. But I'm wondering what admissions standpoint is, what is, if we continue seeing an uptick in gap year students, what would the stance be? How would we then change the admissions policies or not to address that?
Yeah, that's a really good strategic question. It's one that we have pondered here. I mean, the gap year, the growth in gap year students was not something that we planned. This is just something that happened. It's been evolving, and it has the potential to be the tail of Wags the Dog in our admission program. And I don't yet know what that strategy should be, but I'm sure that if, that among the people on the leadership team, Charlie has thought more about it than anyone else. I tried to make it so that we could gap year 84, and I could take a year off this year, but didn't quite happen. This, the whole gap year process started in the first year at Olin, we just spontaneously, and then by and large, we only had a few, and then a few years ago, 17, then 20, and this past year, 27. I've asked the gappies, and there's at least one in the room, about their experience over, particularly in the last three or four years, and to the person, I said, it's the single best thing I ever did. I've asked their parents, even their parents have come around and said, this is a great idea. I've seen my son or daughter grow enormously during that year. I've asked the faculty, they in turn think that the gap year experience is a good thing. And even classmates of those who've had a large number of gap years have said they bring a different dimension. So it's something that, again, a new dean can think about, but it's unique to Olin. And so far, I haven't heard anything that's been negative. Yeah, it's actually, it's catching on with other schools as well. In fact, some schools even fund the gap year, if you can imagine. What a cool idea that is. So I don't know where this is going, and it certainly is a trend that we're watching. And in fact, if you have opinions on it, as students, I'd love to hear from you. Send us an email, as we would on any of the other questions, too. More questions? Yes?
So I know it's kind of the end of the hour, but you had a slide up there that had one of Olin's founding precepts is to expand and be a leader. Another one of the founding precepts is the scholarship. And this is, I've asked about it the last three times, and I just want to keep it on the radar. Is, how do we balance, how do we balance the precepts? How do we, how do we trade off between those?
Yeah. This is not news. Number one, we're in favor of scholarships. We think they're a good thing. The Olin Foundation and the original document imagined that the endowment would continue to grow, and we would be able to always provide full tuition scholarships to every graduate in perpetuity. In fact, they were so convinced of that, Olin did not have a vice president for development. We didn't even have an office in the architectural plans for a vice president for development, because we will have plenty of money. Things have changed, and as you know, we've been through this before. We had to make a choice, do we want to have, for example, three majors and an eight to one, nine to one student-faculty ratio, or do we want to have, for example, one major and a 20 to one student-faculty ratio, and maintain a scholarship with a much smaller number of students than 84 in the incoming class? The board made the decision to continue with the quality and the size of the program that we have now and to augment the revenue stream. That's what we did. We would, in fact, Olin's current ability to reduce the scholarship from 100% is temporary. It's passed by an amendment to the founding precepts that has an expiration date. I think it's like every three years or so, it's being reconsidered. And it's always our default position to go back to full tuition scholarships. But in order to do that, we have to be able to pay for it without going broke. It's on the menu. If you are passionate about this and you would like to help build that scholarship fund, you too can make a donation to that opportunity. We've been working with our alumni group, who have multi-year plans to try and develop the revenue. This is terrific. I can tell you, as the person on the street who meets potential donors all the time, and you could probably ask Mary Kay as well, I haven't run into someone yet who told me my main passion in life is to restore the full tuition scholarship at Olin. I think there are people that maybe will do that, but I imagine there are probably people who've been sitting in this auditorium before. Others, on the other hand, do care about changing education in America, and they do care about trying to influence public policy around STEM education and change in general. It's easier to raise money there. That's sort of the bottom line. It's not off the radar. It's something that we all care deeply about. It's a practical problem of finding the money.
On a quite different note, we talk a lot about at Olin, like, evolving our curriculum, evolving how we're doing in teaching engineering. What are we doing to constantly evolve our administrative side of all? And like, I don't know anything about administration at all, and it seems like it's this kind of like box, it's like, Myles Hall, what's going on there? What are we doing in our administration to continually change and not stagnate, not just become this entity that we do things because we've always done them?
Yeah, that's a really good question, something that worries me a lot, something that our board worries about a lot. And I don't have, I don't think we should spend half an hour talking about this right now. One of the most important aspects of this is students who are interested in administration are wonderful. I'd love to talk with you. Maybe we can go have lunch together at some point, and I can tell you in more detail. Getting more student engagement with understanding how organizations work and how leadership works is a terrific thing. I think it would be good for your career, too, because I imagine that there are a number of you who are destined to be involved in organizing people and finding out how to get things done in your own career. The sort of short snippets about how Olin organizes things, as I said, we didn't have an office of development until 2008, when the financial crisis hit. It's necessary to be adaptive. Olin is also so small that we do things differently than almost every other organization. That's not a surprise, probably. We're small enough, as we've sometimes said, you know, a major research university is like an aircraft carrier, and Olin is like a roadboat. And the operations manual that you need for an aircraft carrier is probably 10 inches thick, and Olin's you can put in your pocket. I can see the bow and the stern of the ship from my spot all the time. I don't need a report on what's happening in the engine room. You can see it. So the process that we use is much less formalized and much more relationship-oriented than other institutions. We work very hard on developing teamwork. One of the things that I've discovered is that you can do a lot more if you can delegate to people you trust than you can if you try to do it all yourself. So in my own effort here to try and get the leadership team going, we try and get the best people we can find, no matter where they are. We try to identify them and bring them in, and then get out of their way. Ask them to work together with others on the team, so they don't build little empires, and do it themselves. Candidates Weekend is probably the, a classic example of how leadership works at Olin. There, I mean, how large is our admission team, Charlie?
Five and a quarter.
Five and a quarter people. And they do not have the resources to run the Candidates Weekend. Candidates Weekend could not run without cooperation across the entire institution. And so the, the part of the job description for everybody we bring in that says, and duties as assigned, is really big, because a lot of the duties that you will be asked to do are not in your immediate set of responsibilities there for supporting the team. We recently had a leadership team retreat, in which we brought in an outside facilitator to help the leadership team learn to communicate more deeply and more authentically and to be able to be more supportive. You can't ask for help unless you know what other people can do. So you have to find out who they are, you have to find out how they work, and you have to ask for that and build teams across organizations. Final point I'll make in, just before we eat, is that the folks that we have in leadership roles at Olin have a completely unusual set of responsibilities that are somewhat idiosyncratic to the strengths of the individual. Most institutions will create an org chart first. Oh, we need a VP for finance, and we need a dean of admission, and they'll go hunt for them. They'll advertise this, you look for applications that fit the box that you've just created. That doesn't work very well in a really small organization. So basically, what you do is you start out with some vague idea of the most important things you need done, and you look at the quality of the applicants and what they're capable of doing, and then you work the org chart around the people that you have. As long as this person is here, they'll carry these unique responsibilities. So let me pick on Joanne, for example. Joanne is a vice president for operations, and she's the chief IT officer, chief information officer for this school at the same time. If we created an app, you know, ad for that position, and look for people that had both of those skills at the same time, it would be a really small candidate pool. And that's not how this arrived. Joanne actually, before this, was VP for Development for a while. So you work with the team that you have to get the jobs done, and you depend an awful lot on teamwork. That's the short answer. One last question, because I think we're now over 12 o'clock. Emily?
I want to introduce more of a comment and a desire as opposed to pose a question. And this is important enough, I think, just a minute past lunch release time is warranted. And a desire that I have is to have a campus like Olin, where we can talk about all the community issues in the town hall format. And to bring a couple of things together, we just heard about a very small team of admissions doing a Candidates Weekend and doing a very large amount of work. We also had a question earlier about what are we doing to make sure that the people that we bring in represent diversity along different dimensions, and some that we don't have represented in the room as much? And one of the responses to that discussion that is very difficult to frame, and I applaud everybody for trying to have those discussions in this format, I just wanted to bring up a point that builds upon, I don't want this to be a campus where we walk on eggshells and have a tough time talking about these things, so, but we, it is very important to have the language. We mentioned the setting up a culture and having the language. So if we have a comment such as, we, we do a lot, and the admissions team is very light, and there's a lot of work going on in underserved areas and looking for underserved students, and that's contrasted with, on the other hand, we have exceptional students, et cetera. I think there's room to change the Venn diagrams and discuss it in terms of, in underserved areas, the student isn't underserved, like, that's not, that's an attribute of the community, not the student. There's exceptional students within those communities, and we're trying to find exceptional students everywhere, so it shouldn't be a dichotomy in that regard. And so just adjusting the language, when students come here, if we are able to have success in that, I think it's the onus on the whole community to understand the nuances and have language that exists beyond what admissions is doing. It had, in order to retain students that may be excellent students and come from underserved areas that don't have a ready-made community at Olin already, we all have to have the right language in terms of, in mindsets to be able to do a great job before a year. So it's beyond just admissions, it's also everybody, how we talk about it. And the town hall may be a forum for getting some of these things out. That's why I bring up the comment now, is that, you know, we, we all need to make sure that we're not walking on eggshells and being too careful, but just, you know, I'll sort of have some of those discussions as I hear things, and just to bring it to the attention of everyone, that these are important things for all of us to do as well. Okay?
Yeah. Thank you, really. Olin's forte has never been walking on eggshells. So let's hope we'll continue this conversation, be very open with each other, and include the entire community. I don't know of any other institution, certainly none of the institutions that I've served in the past, that can have a conversation about these issues with everybody in the room at once. Try doing this at, you know, USC in Los Angeles with 30,000 students, a place of that sort. So this is an opportunity for us that we should use to engage and to try to develop consensus around. Thank you very much. I hope you have a terrific semester.